Starting now.
Thank you so much. Hi, welcome everyone to our meeting and thank you for the flexibility of starting an hour later than we normally do. I would like to officially call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If you would all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, thank you. And I'm going to go a little out of order here. I'm going to have our, I'm going to welcome our delegation. I see Delegate Patterson and Delegate Davis here, but I know that you guys haven't had the opportunity to meet all of our new council. So I'm the only one who is crazy enough to hold over. So you have four new council members and they're joining us from not only La Plata, but somewhere in the great seas. And Jim is here on an Alaskan cruise joining us. So Jim, I'm going to have you introduce yourself to Delegate Patterson and Delegate Davis right now, and then we'll go with Matt and then Evelyn and then Dave. So Jim, all yours. You're muted. Praise of 2020, 2021.
There you go.
There you go.
Jim Goldsmith. I've been with the town probably for forty some years. Ms. Patterson knows me very well. We're very close friends, two mutual other friends as well. Spent thirty years in the Navy, decided to join the council, and I think it's going to be a challenge for me. I know the mayor puts me, makes me put in a lot of time for it. That's why I'm here today.
Thank you so much. Councilman Trolinger.
Good evening. I think I've had the pleasure of at least getting to know both of you a little bit, if not hopefully getting to work with you more in the future. My name is Matt Trolinger. I have a law firm in Walworth, Trolinger Law. Currently, Charles County Association President. So thank you Delegate Davis for giving us our legislative update. So helpful again this year. Appreciate it. And Patterson, thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Good afternoon, Delegate Patterson, Delegate Davis. I have had the opportunity to interact with you in the past. I am very excited to have you here and look forward to collaborating and partnering with the town of La Plata. I, my day job, I'm the Director of Operations for the University of Maryland, Charles Regional. I have been with them for, since 2014, establishing a lot of practices in and around our area for the underserved patient population and pretty much for our patient population so that they don't have to travel outside of our county. We have about seventy percent travel, seventy percent of our individuals in our county that travel outside for healthcare. And one of my initiatives and goals when I initially started with Charles Regional was to remediate that. So I'm looking forward to continuing that work and continuing the work that I do with the town.
Thank you very much. Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Delegate Patterson, Delegate Davis, Dave Jenkins. We appreciate you taking time tonight to be with us and to share our, some of our objectives. And hopefully, as the mayor indicated earlier, we can certainly collaborate and work together during these challenging but also times of opportunity. I believe we've met in many years in the past, and I've had various capacities that we've met. So again, I don't think I need to go any further than that, other than to say thank you for being here. And we certainly look forward to working with you during the session and in the future. Thank you.
Well, we are very energized coming off. Three of us were just at the MML Fall Conference, and so we've got a lot of ideas and it's coming from, from a lot of energy. Yes, Delegate Patterson.
Thank you very much. Delegate Wilson is in wait, is in the waiting room. He'd like to be let in.
Kelly, do you know how to do that?
I'm not sure. It's the manager of your.
Normally, there isn't a waiting room for the meeting. So let me take a look.
Yeah, because it used to be a waiting room. Let me see. I don't.
I'm not showing anybody in the waiting room.
You know what? Let me see if I can send him really quickly the information.
Also send it to Delegate Proctor.
I did this afternoon.
Oh, did I? I'm not sure.
Okay, let me see if I have it right here. So. Let's see where. Okay, let me forward this again and resend this message. And I will put in C.T. Wilson. Okay, I don't know if I have C.T.'s number here. Do you have his email address? Or does he go by? I know I've sent him stuff. All right, let me see if I can get his. Sorry about that. Let me see if I can get his email address. All right, C.T. Wilson has got you. All righty, we will be sending him this one to make sure that, oh, good, that's exciting that he is coming on as well. And. And here we go. All right, let's see if I resent it. So let's see if he can get in on this one and just click in and to join it on. And hopefully, we'll hear from him in just a second.
Hi, this is Senator Michael Jackson. Good evening, everybody. I couldn't get on the Zoom, so I dialed in on my phone. I'll continue to try to get on the Zoom.
Fantastic. I just sent it to you again. So hopefully, you can click on that link and it will work. Always technological difficulties. So thank you. And we'll see Delegate Wilson will be able to get on. Join, did you have something to say? Okay. And Kelly, while we are interacting with the delegation, could you mute the others so that we don't have the background noise?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. All right. So while they're, Delegate Patterson, do, have you gotten any update from Delegate Proctor or Delegate Wilson? Delegate Wilson on yet? Okay, we'll, we'll see what happens and we'll move forward. But I wanted to start off by saying thank you so much for joining us. And this is the first time that we have come before you in a virtual meeting and really tried to work and tried to see if you guys can help us with funding. And we're, so we're going to be new at this and we're expecting you guys to give us all your wisdom and all your guidance that you can. And we did, we have put together a quick overview on what we're asking. And then we will formally present for a bond bill request in January. But the purpose of tonight is to really open the line of communications between the delegation and the town of La Plata and to see what we're doing. So you can see how we're trying to really enhance our town. And with the help of any bond initiatives, it may go a lot faster than it is right now. So what we have tonight is we will be presenting just an overview. And this is, Delegate Patterson, do you have something? Oh, you're muted.
I know, I know. Would you, someone please send the link to ctwilson22@gmail.com.
Kelly, do you have that or do you want me to?
I'll take care of it, Madam Mayor.
You got it? All right. Thank you. All right, we'll wait just a second for them to get on. I will give you a little overview about our MML Fall Conference that we just came out of, and it was fantastic. And we just became a sustainable community. So we have that recognition, Sustainable Maryland. So it was very productive for us. And we're working hard behind the scenes and hopefully, there will be some progress that is quite visible to, to the public as well as to our delegation. Senator Jackson, can you hear us okay?
Yes, Mary.
And I want to thank you so much for joining us as well. We really appreciate that. I know that you all have long days and for you to join us at an evening meeting is very, we very much appreciate that. So in the way that we run our.
Not at all.
And, and please feel free to interject anything. This is our time to really get to, to work with you guys. So it is not a real formal, formal meeting. It is more of a discussion. So that, that I would appreciate that. You're never going to insult me if you talk over me. I will yield the floor to any of you.
No, I'd like to say, Madam Mayor, that, and your council, that although, you know, I'm in District 27 and La Plata's in District 28, we are part of the Charles County delegation. We support everything that matters in Charles County. So glad to be on board.
I love that. Thank you so much. And we're hoping that we, we're hoping that you guys meet in person in, during the legislative session. But we'll see what happens. And we'll be making a trek up there if you guys do, so we can meet in person with you all. All right, did Delegate Wilson make?
Why don't we do this? I can, and the members that are online can go over the legislative process. And so welcome Delegate Wilson. And, and then you can then share with us some of the ideas that we have, that you've had for the town. Okay?
Thank you. And thank you Delegate Wilson for joining us. It's good to see you.
Nice to see you as well.
Okay. Well, members of the delegation that are here or online include, as you just heard, Senator Michael Jackson, Senator Arthur Ellis, and then Delegate Wilson. You wanted to agree? You're muted.
Oh, I was just going to say hi.
Okay. And then we have Delegate Deborah Davis. Did you want to say something, Delegate? You're saying no. Okay. And the only other member who's missing is Delegate Susie Proctor, and she may be joining us later on. And so we want to just really appreciate, we certainly appreciate the town, the mayor and the town council for including us in your discussion today. The legislative bond initiative, it used to be called bond bills, are options that members of the Maryland General Assembly have in terms of providing resources back to their districts. And we have done these a number of years. And just to be frank, in our discussion, Madam Mayor, we discussed some of the ideas that you had for the town. And, and that's why I'm glad that we're able to meet informally via Zoom, but maybe next time in person, to look at some of the projects that you have under consideration and if and how they meet the objectives for the legislative bond initiative funding. The eligibility requirements are pretty clear. I will have a disclaimer to say that the qualifications and the guidelines for 2022 will not be out until December the first. And so although we had had as a delegation plan to have a hearing October the 20th, it would be futile because we're unsure as to whether or not the requirements have changed. And so we are looking at having the legislative bond initiative hearing possibly December the 8th. But let me just tell you in the past, what they've done, what the projects that have been funded. They identified projects that should be ready to move forward. In other words, shovel ready, including having sufficient other source funds immediately available to be considered eligible for receiving legislative bond initiative funds. The project, the funds may not be used to fund projects with sectarian, sectarian purposes. In other words, no religious organization. And then if it is somehow connected with a church or religious organization, there should be a letter certifying the funds will not be used in furtherance of sectarian process. Okay. Funds should be used only to fund projects that benefit the public. Applicants should briefly describe the, the public purpose or benefits. Funds should not be used to fund municipal buildings, government buildings, local police departments, or local fire department buildings. An applicant must own the property or have at least fifteen year, a fifteen year lease should not be used to fund projects eligible for other state capital, from other state capital funding. In other words, for some projects, we have suggested go to other sources within the state because there are other projects, other funding sources. They should not be used to fund projects completed prior to the effective date. In other words, you can't backfill a project. And, and there are requirements that you sign once the funding is proposed. There are agreements that you sign with the state of Maryland. So that in essence is an overview of what was, what were the guidelines for 2021. And as I've said before, 2022 guidelines are not out or eligible. So I'm going to ask my colleagues if I've omitted something, or if you'd like to add a comment, please do so. Delegate Wilson?
No, Madam Chair, as usual, you got everything. So you're good.
I see Delegate Proctor. I'm glad you're able to get on.
Yes, I'm here on the phone.
Thank you. One thing that I omitted, when we get the projects proposals, we then vote on them. In other words, some projects will be sponsored by the House of Delegates and other projects will be funded by the Senate. So in essence, we don't commingle the funds, but they're all for Charles County and its district. Okay?
Fantastic. Thank you for that overview because as I said, we have not, especially this council has not done this before. So it gives us some parameters that we need to make sure that we stay within. And, and what I will do is, we've got three projects. And as I said before, please, I mean, if it's easier to raise your hand or just chime in, I can see when you're unmuted and, and you want to say something. This is your opportunity to ask us questions as well. Kelly has put together a quick slide presentation that will go through the slides and tell you kind of what we're looking at and why we're looking at these projects. The three projects that we're looking at possibly funding, if it, if, if you feel that they are worthy, is the Dorchester Community Center, some playgrounds for La Plata, and Charles Street, Main Street, Main Skate. Kelly, are you able to pull up? Oh, of course you are. So we're going to start off with the Dorchester Community Center. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with it. It is our old police station that we had. It's five acres back on Dorchester Street. The chief is very involved in this and, and they have a committee and we've been working on this for a couple of years. And the big thing that we have here is that it is in our underserved population. And this is an opportunity, you all know that when, it doesn't matter where you are, but if kids don't have something to do, they're going to find something to do. And sometimes it's not the best thing. So why not give them a place to go to? So what we were looking for is, we had contacted the governor pre-pandemic and we were, we were awarded a $250,000 grant. This grant is going to go for, as Kelly has pulled up, it's going to go for a prefab community recreation center. This will cover part of the core, part of the cost, but it will have indoor courses because the, the kids need someplace to run and have energy, you know, just expel some of their energy. So we'll have a basketball court in there, possibly use it for soccer as well. We'll have seating in there. We'll have classrooms. We will have a fitness area. This is kind of the idea. We're working with a place called Neighborhood Design Center, and they're in the process of designing something for us to cover the entire five acres. This will be done in phases so that it's not just, you know, dumping everything at once, but it will take a couple of years to fully outfit the, the five acres. There will be part, a park area that will have nature trails in there, as I said, outdoor education space, outdoor court space. Right now, it is the old police station. And we have had several, several of the kids from age sixth grade to ninth grade that have already been utilizing the services at the DCC. And it's, it's so important, that engagement. The first phase that we were going to do for this, besides the actual master site development plan, is we're engaging the community so that they have a say in this. So they are helping us design that. And these are our existing partners. We have the Police Department, Keep La Plata Beautiful, the Neighborhood Design Bureau, and Will's Group. We want the community that is going to use this the most to have a say in it. Because what we may think is really hip and happening, they may not like at all. And so that we're doing a community engagement on that. Right now, we are, we have been in that community, really trying to spruce it up a little bit. This right here is a basketball court that, I don't know if you all saw it when you, I know Delegate Davis, I saw you at the Kent Avenue Party. This is the next thing that's happening. And it's happening right now, is they're taking the existing basketball court, and they have already had community input, and they are having a paint party. And, and the kids have designed this with different, different shapes, different colors and all that. And it's just going to really bring some life to that area. We've already put, for safety reasons, we had put, installed a fence around a retaining pond that was there where the kids, if the basketballs went past, if they didn't make the shot, it was, it had the potential of going into the retaining pond. This, and you can see the back where the huts and all of that is, that is the fencing. And they have allowed it to kind of meld with the nature. So it's not such a fence. It's now a, a wall of greenery there. So that's what's going on right now. But that's part of, part of making Phoenix Run a, a great place for the kids to have a community center and a rec center. So we were, what my ask would be, and you can tell me that I'm crazy on this, but is to perhaps, and, and the town has put in $100,000, just so you know, we have that in our CIP. So we are, we have skin in the game as well. But the ask, if it's not too much, would be to match with the governor or with the governor and the town has at 250, 350,000. It may be too much. Remember, we're new at this. This is a conversation. And you can tell us what a normal ask is, because I shoot for, I shoot high, and then, then I'm brought back to life on that. But that is the first ask that we're looking at. What do you guys think? Any feedback on that? Is this something that, it's a pie in the sky, don't even try it? Or is, is this something, it will really enhance the community that it, that we're looking to help. Delegate Wilson?
I apologize. I was briefly disconnected. So hopefully, that won't happen again. I don't know if you covered it in my disconnection, but as far as who is going to have access to this facility, is that I understand it's to serve a neighborhood. Sorry. I understand it's to serve, serve a neighborhood. Thank you. I understand it's to serve a neighborhood, but are, is basically, are people throughout Charles County going to be able to use this as well, if they so choose?
Absolutely. And Chief, our chief is on here too, and he's on the committee. So Chief, if I speak out of line, please chime in. But it is, it will not be exclusive. It will be inclusive. So I do not see excluding anybody from coming.
I'll ask it another way, because I know in Prince George's County, they charge a different fee for individuals who don't live in the county as far as their, their sports complex centers. So in ensuring that we serve the county versus, you know, I guess that's what I'm just, just questioning. And again, this is not a definitive, I don't need the answers, just something I need you guys to be thinking about as far as how we serve our community, but we don't have it overcrowded. That's all.
That is a great point. Thank you very much. And I will take that back. Chief, do you have anything to, have you guys discussed that?
Yeah, the services we have going on now with like Coach B with the basketball and some of the other things, has been open to anybody who lives in Charles County. And we've had residents from different parts of the county participate. So the only thing that really limits us right now is the size of the current facility. But I don't believe we've charged costs for anything thus far. We've been able to, to work it out to, if somebody has a need and they want to participate, they have been able to participate.
And thank you, Chief. And, and you know, Delegate Wilson, I will bring that back to the DCC community because that is a very, that's a great point. If people are coming in from different counties, are we, once this facility is built, who, who is it going to benefit? It's going to benefit our community and our county. So I will make sure that we address that. That's a great point. Chief?
Yeah, to Delegate Wilson's point, I worked for the city of Greenbelt for twenty-six years prior to coming to La Plata. And they have a comprehensive rec system there. Where there was structured fees to where if you lived in Greenbelt, the price or, or maybe there was no cost. But if you lived in other parts of Prince George's County, there were fees associated with it. And it was our mission that if, of course, our focus is the neighborhood right around it, but anybody who wants to participate and can't, we're going to make sure that they can.
Thank you. What other questions do you all have for us? Delegate Patterson?
Just a reminder, this is going to be, you will have to make this presentation at our December meeting. So we're brainstorming right now, but to give you an alert, you'll probably be, you will be part of the overall requests at that time.
Excellent. And any input that you all could give us so we can make a better presentation for you all, I am, I welcome that. Delegate Davis?
This is awesome, Mayor James. I, my question is, do you have an estimate of what the total cost is, the total design build out and what the cost would be?
Chief, have you gotten that?
I don't have it in front of me, but that is something we can get back to the delegation in a very quick amount of time. I don't want to give a bad number. So yeah, we'll get it to them.
And by the December meeting, we should have a, at least a preliminary master site development plan. So you can see everything that we're going to do. I would not come and ask for money without that. And as I said, it's going to be in phases. And that way, you can see the whole comprehensive plan on that. But thank you for that. I will make sure that that is addressed as well. Any other questions on this? Oh, Delegate. Oh, Delegate Proctor? Oh, I think you're still muted.
My que, yeah, my question has to do with transportation. For those folks who are not in walking distance or do not have their own transportation, do you anticipate the various bus lines that you have being of access to folks who need it for this purpose?
That is a great question that, if chief, you don't know that, we will make sure that we incorporate that into our presentation. Chief, have you discussed that?
We have discussed it at length and we know that transportation is an issue in Charles County, especially as you get south of Waldorf. But that is something that I think we can kind of brainstorm and get back, whether it's a voucher system through Van Gogh or something along those lines to make sure those who want to get there can get there and do so safely.
Make sure we incorporate that, thank you. Senator Jackson or Senator Ellis? Delegate Wilson, do you have any questions for us? Go ahead.
I think a lot of the other things we'll deal with in December as far as like, once this gets going, what's going to be the cost to keep it up and running? Again, liability, insurance, things of that nature, you know, all the good faith stuff sounds great, they're making sure that, you know, obviously that's all covered, that, you know, this is something that if the money's put in, that it's not going to die out because there was no money to support it. And also again, as Delegate Davis said, what's the overall cost? Because this, we want these to be shovel-ready projects to where when we give the money, then they're open, not where they're continuing. And we have other projects where every year they continue to ask for more money and we almost never see any result. So it would be interesting to see.
Thank you for that. Senator Jackson?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and a great presentation. One of the things that we all have learned over the years is the partnership between the two chambers. So the Senate Chamber and the House Chamber, helps to make the resources stretch a little bit more as well as the buy-in that you have going forward, so.
Thank you very much. Senator Ellis, do you have any questions for us? If you do, you're muted. Okay, I'm going to assume not. So we will incorporate, and thank you for the feedback with that. And I'm getting a sense of exactly what you're looking for in the December 8th meeting and with the presentation, a much more comprehensive one. But it sounds like, I see someone raising their hand, let me see who's.
Madam Chair, I have a quick question on that December 8th meeting. If we're in session during that time, would that, do you plan on having that meeting still go forward? And this is obviously for Delegate, Madam Chairwoman, Delegate Patterson?
No.
Okay.
I think that's too much of a distraction. I was only thinking at December the 1st for the guidelines, so we may just have a meeting December the 2nd, whatever, but I appreciate your bringing that up because it could be a possibility.
Yeah, I think on the 6th is when we plan on doing, it's going to be at least a week. And I know depending on how slow the Senate moves, you know, we are going to be dealing with the redistricting as well as I think 26 vetoes, 28 vetoes. So I just want to make sure we allot proper time for that as well.
Oh, that's a point, thank you so much.
And you guys can tell us when it's, it is convenient for you and we will be ready to present there. And I think I see, is that Senator Ellis that's raising his hand?
Hi, this is Autumn Grant, Senator Ellis's Chief of Staff. I did just want to chime in and say I am taking notes and will be giving him just a few updates about what we discussed tonight. So I'm sure that we will circle back with any questions we do have. Thank you for the presentation and we look forward to hearing more about these projects.
Thank you, I appreciate you chiming in. So I am getting the feel from, from the delegation that this is not a no, if we present it properly, it could be a maybe. I'm not getting you guys to commit, but it's not a no, so that's, that's good. Because we can polish this up and make it so that it includes all of your questions that you have had. Is that a good feeling about that? I think it fits the current criteria, so I'm not committing you to anything. There you go, alright. So that's the first one that we have. The second one that we were looking at is we have the plate, we have public parks. We have three public parks that are in need of some love. And they are all, they all are located within or near and underserved, the underserved communities. This one right here is Will's Memorial Park. It just has aging playground. So if, if there is funding for it, we would like to replace the equipment with updated equipment for the children. This, really a lot of the children from across the street in that neighborhood and on Patuxent Court come over here and it's a beautiful park over here and there's soccer and all of that. Delegate Wilson?
Sorry, this is also a question for our delegation chair. You know, we have a project open space in Monys as well and one of the things we try to do is we try not to conflate Monys. You know, we're basically our bond, our bonds are for, basically when you don't have any other resources available. And I'm not sure how much this bleeds into project open space. Have you guys looked into that as far as assisting you with parks, things of that nature?
Well, that was my sentiment as well, that this seems like a project for, funding for project open space. I know there was a proposal for the La Plata Park, I forget what it's called, the one right behind the Board of Ed, for upgrades and other parks, so.
That, was that Laurel Springs or was that? Okay, Laurel Springs is county. But you know what, at MML this weekend, I just learned about, from Parks and Recreation, that the county does get, every year they're allocated money for open space. And we have never been part of that and it's probably because we haven't asked, but now I know. And so Delegate Wilson, thank you for that. That is, I am not going to waste your time on that when there are other sources, possible other sources to receive funding for. So I will definitely research that a little bit more and should it be exhausted, then if we have time, then I will present that when we meet the next time.
Project Open Space, it's still federal, I mean state funds. And so it does go through, I believe it's the Senate. But it's just another source of funding from the state.
Okay, fantastic. And then the other one that we're looking at, as you have, oh, before I go on, Delegate Wilson, go ahead.
I apologize, I think my hand was left up, no, no.
No worries, no worries. So the other, we are, as I said, we just became a sustainable Maryland. We are a, Maryland's first bird city. We are a tree city and we are Main Street Maryland affiliate. And next month, we will have members from the Maryland Arts, State Arts District coming down here to look at our possibility of becoming an arts and entertainment district. So we have a lot of great, great things on the horizon. And one other, and I don't know if this is something that, if we put a proposal together that would even qualify, but Charles Street Main Scape. And that would be, the ask would be to help us to put the underground utility, electrics underground, to have the signage, to do brick and, to do a facade for brick and mortar. It's really to revitalize the downtown. And I know there are other funding sources for that, but it's going to take a lot to do that. And I don't know if that's something that we put a proposal together for you all. I know they've done that in Annapolis with the cobblestones. We don't want to go back to cobblestones or bricks on that, but we would like to do some things that make the downtown much more attractive. Is that something that would be eligible for funding?
Yes, it would be. It's just a matter of, again, how is written up in the guidelines and the funding, a funding amount. So, yeah, those, the first and the third are certainly eligible for consideration at this point.
Fantastic. Okay, so since we're really informal here, what is, what is an ask that is too much? What is the one that you are going to all get together and go, that mayor has gone absolutely bonkers?
We can't do that. It's just a matter of, there is really no formula. Well, there is and there isn't. It depends on the size of the district and if you look at the funding, because it's public information, you will find some districts have a lot of funding because they're a larger district. It's just a matter of how we come together and it serves the population of public use. I would think also, we don't, we tend to look at who is going to sponsor it. On the Senate side, they will have their projects to sponsor and then on the House side, we will have our projects to sponsor. And sometimes we also, well, not sometimes, we always have to prioritize them. For example, we may have four projects and so each member will say which project is a priority in their opinion. And so it is simply by majority rules.
Fantastic.
We don't tell, we don't tell, I mean, if something is astronomical, we will simply say that probably will not get funded. Or if it does get funded, it may be reduced, one half, one third. Or if it's a reasonable amount of money, it may be funded totally. So it would be unfair to say to you, this is what you need to do. This, these are your projects. These are the funds that you will use, not totally to fund all the projects. It may be Phase 1, it may be Phase 2 of a project, et cetera, so.
So what I hear from you is it's going to be based on how well we write our proposal and how thorough it is and if it's shovel-ready, at least the phase. And a phase could be an engineering phase, it could be something like that that builds up to that. So it's going to be, okay, so it's going to be incumbent to us to make sure that when we receive, if money is allocated to us, that it doesn't sit in some bank account without it being used. So, perfect. Delegate Wilson?
And Madam Chair, I'm not trying to speak out of turn. One of the issues that I usually, your competition is sometimes very stiff because you guys are an incorporated town. You have a means of finance, you have taxes. We're dealing with a lot of individuals and a lot of nonprofits that don't have access. So I'll say this personally, is that when the government asks the government for stuff, there's always a pause because we know there's a lot of things, homeless shelters, there are a lot of other nonprofits that really don't have any access or have very limited access to resources. So when we stack them up, we always hold our government, we hold our elected officials accountable. And you know, obviously we're stewards of our constituents' money. So it's, it's almost like you feed the needy, not the greedy. And I'm not saying that you're being greedy, I'm saying I understand why you're going for this, but knowing that you're going to be competing with individuals that don't have the same access to capital that you have. They don't have an ability to tax, they don't have the ability to, you know, even go for the project open space. So please be mindful of that because I know you're trying to put together a great formula and I do appreciate that. But your, your competition is often very stiff in that there are nonprofits who don't have access that you do. And so I know in the past 11 years that I've been on, when it comes to county projects, government projects, they kind of sometimes take a backseat unless we can find a way to. And also it's a lot easier to get money through line items for government projects. It's a lot more difficult to get that line item budget money from, for the nonprofits. So I would ask you to keep that in mind with your presentations. No matter how shiny they are, you still have some stiff competition.
And I appreciate that and I think that one thing that the town of La Plata is committed to is being partners. So we are going to put some skin in the game and make sure that we have money that we are, from our town, that we will put in towards these two projects so that it is more of a partnership and that we can have a better project. But I totally appreciate that insight, Delegate Wilson. Any, open the floor up to the delegation for questions or for council. I, yes, I see Councilman Trolinger, do you have a question?
Sure, first off, I really appreciate everybody being here. I know that you all devote your time, your energy, your passion to making Charles County and Southern Maryland a much better place. So we're all partners in that. And in that vision and focus, if there are ways that you see that we can make La Plata a better place, something that would excite the state, right? As being a destination, because a strong La Plata, I think, benefits Southern Maryland and benefits Charles County greatly. So we're open for things that you've seen that are lacking with our town. We want to make it better, we want to make it inclusive and diverse and vibrant. So I want you to know that we're willing to hear feedback from you as to how to make it a better place for everybody.
Well said, thank you for that. Anyone else from the floor like to speak? Counsel, anything? Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Thank you, delegates and senators, we really appreciate your time. Delegate Davis and Delegate Patterson and Wilson, I know that you are very familiar with Charles County and I have gone before and made requests in the past, you know, through other organizations. So I am aware of your priorities and how you consider things, especially UCT Wilson. I do understand your heart for the underserved communities and the nonprofits. So with that being said, with the knowledge that you have of our town and our county, if there are things that you can, you know, pretty much piggybacking off of what Councilman Trolinger said, if there are things that you feel will make our town better and especially for the underserved community, we would love to hear them. As you've experienced other areas in the county, I'm sure that you will have some recommendations for us.
Well, I'll be just brief on this. We're here to serve you guys, you know, and I'm sure all three, well, two of the three delegates weren't ever on local council, but I've always learned to mind my business when it comes to how local council, council members or commissioners, that's, that's you guys. I'm not going to sit here and point out your foibles or what I think you can do better as a town. I think you guys are doing great, we're here to serve you. We're here to try and find if we can't do it, be a bond to see if we can get a line item. Because I do believe while, you know, it's always weird giving a small government, it's always weird giving a government, there are also other ways to do that. So even by you bringing this to our attention, you know, I think it's important, but I don't think you're going to hear any casting aspersions, judgment or hints on how you guys can be better as a town. That's y'all's job, you guys are doing it, that's not our job. So, just speaking personally, but I know from other, the two other individuals who are actually on, they were actually former commissioners, they don't, I'm sure they didn't like to be told by the delegation what to do either, so, yeah.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that. Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, and again, I appreciate the delegation taking time to do this. Just a follow-up from Councilperson Trolinger and Councilmember Bryant Ward. And also Delegate Wilson, what you just said, perhaps there's a, perhaps we could use you and or your staff to help us pursue other possible government funding sources, for instance, like the Charles Street, Streetscape and that. I know there's some programs there that we can possibly work through the Maryland Department of Transportation, State Highway Administration. So perhaps we could, if it's appropriate, we could use you to maybe do a better job of entree and how we could get their attention and begin to educate them about our needs, if that's possible in the future.
And I'll say very briefly on that, that we have a wonderful chair of our delegation and I'm not saying I won't help you, but I'm, through the chair, as well as we have a chair of the Senate delegation. And again, you can get help from both sides because I, you're right, I agree. These projects, there's possibly ways to get them funded that just might, might not be with bonds. But just definitely reach through the chairs and let us stick our little sticky fingers out there to see what we can catch for you.
Thank you very much for that response, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Delegate Patterson?
Yeah, I, I love the way, um, Delegate Wilson responds by saying sticky fingers. Uh, look, the Department of Legislative Services, part of the bond initiative hearing that we offer, you will be given information not only about bond initiatives, but there are so many other funding sources. Um, and, uh, Mayor James, I'm glad you mentioned partnerships because certainly when I think about the first, um, project proposal, partnering with some community groups would be ideal because, again, there are not enough community recreational centers for our citizens to utilize. And so, uh, this is just the first step, and I appreciate the fact that you have hosted this for us. We have a lot to listen to and, um, I, I really appreciate the fact that we're, this is a, I think in my years, this is the first time we've really had a, a joint meeting together to discuss initiatives. And so for that, the council members and for the mayor, for the sheriff, we certainly, uh, certainly appreciate that.
Well, thank you so much. And I, and, and I appreciate you all taking time out this evening. I, I would love to, um, as I said, move forward, collaborate and use you all as, uh, the resources that you are, that's why you were elected. So that is awesome. And, and now we're learning how to do a little bit more with each other. And I think it's going to be a great partnership moving forward. And, um, again, my, it's open communication. My lines are always open. Should you, uh, um, have any suggestions? Uh, we have everybody's email and, and I'm sure that it will be used. Please don't block me. Um, I, I see a CTE, like, okay, yeah, we're going to block that one. But no, I greatly appreciate it. Um, and, uh, if there's nothing else from, uh, from you all, I, I don't want to keep you, um, very late, uh, for our meeting. But again, much appreciated for, for your time this evening and, and the honest, uh, feedback.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stay safe and we'll talk soon. Great conversation. All right, moving on to our next agenda item. We have our civil emergency for consideration of adoption. That would be Mr. Manuel?
Yeah, I apologize. I was trying to get my camera and microphone turned on. I didn't realize my camera was off. Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, before you, I'm trying to bring up the agenda. Uh, as you stated, the civil emergency, uh, Kelly has brought up the civil emergency. I believe it's paragraph five where the, uh, significant language is located. If you do not mind, I will read to you. Uh, in an effort to control and prevent the spread of COVID-19 within the town, uh, it is recommended that in order to protect the citizens of the town of La Plata, the council of the town of La Plata is recommending the donning of masks inside of any business, commercial establishment, restaurant, store, place of worship, or any other building open to and allowing entrance of the public. From paragraph five, if you go to paragraph eight, you will see what the action would be, uh, that you'll consider this evening. Uh, it is ordered that a civil emergency still exists and is declared for a period of time beginning at 5:00 PM on the date of October 12th, 2021, and continuing in effect for a period not to exceed 30 days and ending at 11:59 on the date of November 12th, 2021. And I believe, uh, the existing emergency was due to expire at 11:59 as well tonight. So I think 5:00 o'clock maybe is not correct, but that's neither here nor there. Uh, what we're looking at doing is moving this forward 30 days, uh, due to expire. And I believe Michelle's on the call, but I believe that will align with, uh, our first work session in November as well. So we will not, I don't believe, have to anticipate calling a special meeting, uh, of council just to reconsider this, uh, in the event that it's still necessary or if council feels it's still necessary to sort of continue this civil emergency. So having said that, I will be quiet, but, uh, if you have any questions, anyone?
Uh, I'm going to, um, go off the cuff here and ask Councilwoman Bryant Ward. I know that you have had the pulse on COVID. And I, I didn't ask you this prior, and, and I'm putting you on the spot here. What, how has the, how, how have the numbers been? Have you had, do you have any feedback, insight, feelings, um, personal experiences on that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Madam Mayor, Councilstaff, I have shared with you the, um, numbers as they have increased. I think I shared with you the last data that I obtained from the, um, Charles County Health Department. And of course, in our hospital, we are seeing increasing numbers. Um, and so we are actually going back to several of the initial mandates that we had in place, um, back in 2020. Um, I don't see the numbers, um, declining. Our precautionary measures are not being scaled back. We are full mask indoors, um, all staff, even in their offices. So, um, that's definitely something to consider as we, um, engage the public. And I, I will send you updated numbers from the, um, Health Department on tomorrow. But those numbers that I sent you from, um, September to October certainly did, um, August to September increased.
Thank you very much for that. So, uh, in, in my opinion, and of course, we'll take it to a vote, um, there, there needs to, and, and just based on, uh, what Councilwoman, uh, Bryant Ward just said, there is a need to, to strongly recommend the wearing of masks indoors. And, um, I am in favor of moving the civil emergency, uh, extending it for another 30 days. Uh, if I have someone out there that would like to make a motion, um, I see Councilman Trolinger. I love that. I love that, Jim. That was good. Thumbs up. Councilman Trolinger, I see that you're on my, uh, muted.
Yes, like, and the, sorry, I'm on the phone. Reading the recommendation, where this recommendation, wearing masks as presented.
Okay, so I have a motion to, uh, extend. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion. I'll second the motion.
Um, uh, thank you. Uh, discussion, uh, Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Madam Mayor, so the language doesn't say strongly recommend. It simply says recommend. So are we strongly recommending? Are we going to change the language? Because it's, right now, it's just a recommendation.
I, I think we're okay with recommending. Unless, unless the council feels otherwise, I'm not opposed to strongly recommending. Um, if that's what we feel that we should do, that's fine.
I think that's what you stated. So, um, I want to underline the statement with, uh, the document.
Um, I retract strongly and I will say what the statement, what the, the document says. Uh, Councilman Goldsmith?
Yeah, just a technical issue, and I'm not sure if I'm counting wrong. But, uh, October has 31 days into it. So does that mean it would have to end on November 11th and not the 12th?
Okay. And we have a meeting, is our meeting on the 12th?
Our meeting's on the 9th.
Okay. So if we could, um, I guess we're going to change that. We have a couple amendments and, and I guess we have, so, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, I know you're going to, to get me on this. Make sure I'm doing this right, okay? So we have a motion to accept it as presented. Um, we have amendments to it. So we would need to, I guess, deny that and make another motion because the date is wrong. So, all right, I knew you were coming up there. Go ahead.
So you have a mo- motion and a second. So the vote needs to, um, go through. It either passes or fails as it's written.
Okay. So, um, as written, it is, it says 30 days and November 12th. So all in favor of accepting the document as presented, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, please say nay.
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 Okay, so motion, this motion fails. Do I have a motion from someone that would like to maybe change this? Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Madam Mayor, I, you know, I, being in healthcare and seeing the impact that this is having on our community, you know, I understand the need to not tell, um, the businesses what to do. Basically, they're all doing it anyway. I, if we're going to be liberal with our language and recommend, I would really like to strongly recommend so that they understand the urgency and importance of our, our decision so that it doesn't look like we're not taking the appropriate, um, thought process with the seriousness of this virus.
And would you like to put that in a form of a motion and maybe change the date too?
Um, Madam Mayor, I move that we amend the stated proclamation to state in paragraph five, um, the second, the first sentence, that we strongly recommend the donning of masks inside of any business and change the, the date, um, to November the 11th.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right. Um, any further discussion? I appreciate that, uh, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, because you know how I feel. I already said strongly, but that's not the language. So I appreciate that, uh, uh, suggestion. All right, so hearing that we had, it was, uh, a motion and properly seconded. All in favor of the new language, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you for that. And, uh, the, uh, last item on our agenda before we go into matters of information is the Transportation Planning Engineer Services Resolution 21-35.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, we thought I'd take you to bring this to you last at the business meeting in September. And so we are bringing it tonight and asking for your consideration of the, uh, legislation that Kelly has on the screen. Uh, if we can scroll down, Kelly, I guess, to the, uh, yeah, just keep going. I'm trying to pull up mine on my screen. And then thou- now therefore paragraph. Uh, so maybe scroll up a little. Yeah, we need to split the screen. I apologize. There we go. Uh, we had included an amount of not to exceed $20,000 annually. Uh, we, we're not, we don't know what to anticipate really as these matters come up. But the reason we settled on that number is because we do have the provision within our charter that any expenditure over $20,000 would have to become before council for your consideration of approval. Uh, there is, I don't want to give the sort of indication that this is going to be locked to a $20,000 annual limit. Uh, just, we put that number in because we knew anything that exceeded that $20,000 amount would have to come as a separate piece of legislation for the council's consideration. So I just wanted to clear up that. And, you know, if you have any questions regarding any element of the, uh, the legislation, we, the staff would be happy to, to attempt to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. And, and this is fantastic. It's for the rapid flashing beacon, um, uh, crosswalks that we are pursuing on Charles Street. So that's what that is for. Uh, do I have someone who would like to make a motion to, uh, accept Resolution 21-35 as presented?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to, um, approve Resolution 21-34, authorize 20, 21-34 Transportation Planning and Engineering Professional Services.
Uh, Councilman Jenkins, I think-
35.
35.
35, okay. All right, correction, 35. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you for that, uh, Councilman Goldsmith. Any discussion?
Um, Madam Mayor, Councilman Jenkins, again, I, I, perhaps this is, um, for later discussion, and I don't necessarily want to get down on the weeds. But, um, the, the other element of this too is that there's a, besides the pedestrian crossing, there is, I guess, two other elements. And one is to, uh, to do an intersection analysis at Charles and Willow Avenue. And then basically on-call services, uh, as needed. And I was just curious, and maybe we can talk about it offline or later. What would be the procedure for staff of the town manager, manager to initiate that service? Let's say, uh, that there's a need for an additional analysis or some other transportation element. How would that proceed? Or what's the process to do that?
Well, the process, yeah, give you an example, Councilman Jenkins. Town staff has a safety committee, and we sort of bring up separate items, uh, from time to time. One of the areas we've been trying to focus on is the intersection of Centennial and St. Mary's Avenue. Uh, we've had a number of collisions there in the past. And we are, you know, this is an area that we may sort of ask for a proposal to do a sort of, uh, intersection, uh, investigation or a study to determine if there are any elements that we could do to improve, uh, based on the amount of cost that we would get. Uh, you know, we would bring it to council's attention if it's under the threshold, uh, and we see value in it, being the staff, then we would probably engage with the, uh, the engineering firm to, to provide such services. I don't think it's going to be a, you know, that's one of the major, uh, things before. In other areas on St. Mary's Avenue as well, we had talked about the intersection of Glen Albion Drive and St. Mary's Avenue. Uh, so there's different areas that we've looked in the past. And so there may be some potentials that we could engage with, uh, to do, you know, just small studies on, uh, but don't expect the cost to, to run. But we've also talked about, Kevin and I have talked about that in, you know, if we get in to a situation where cumulatively we could get towards the $20,000 range, then we will be bringing that to council as well. That there's a number of task orders, for example. Uh, you know, our intent is definitely not to try to bypass the council's, uh, authority in any way. But we will definitely be keeping you in the loop at the same time because it is, uh, town funds that are associated with these task orders.
And just a real quick, uh, question, if I may. Thank you for that, uh, clarification. Um, and, and I'm assuming that this, this also would include other particular or related transportation-related issues, for instance, walkability or sidewalks or pedestrian crossings on, on town streets. Is that a correct assumption on my part?
If it's anything that involved the, uh, for the transportation element, whether it be vehicular or pedestrian.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. So we, any, uh, further discussion? So we have a motion that has been properly seconded. Uh, all in favor for, um, adopting Resolution 21-35? Please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. All right, that brings us down to matters of information.
Madam Mayor, I don't have anything other than to say that, you know, we were in attendance, as you previously stated, with the Maryland Municipal League Conference. It was a great, uh, opportunity to sort of, uh, you know, see some of the current issues. I think the major one that sort of seems prevalent across the street is the, uh, I guess, the coastal resiliency or the, uh, so it was a, a good conference with a lot of great breakout sessions, uh, and really thought it brought value. So I was appreciative for the council to allow me to attend and look forward to, to future, uh, visits to Maryland Municipal League.
Thank you. And, uh, matters of information, I just have to say you guys were great tonight, especially with the delegation. And I've got to give a shout out to Kelly. Kelly made us look amazing with that PowerPoint presentation at the last minute. Um, she will never call me again, uh, just to talk to me on a night, uh, she's in charge of a, a, yeah.
As always, you are correct, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, yes, you are. She's like, call me up or something else. I didn't even let her say anything, and I went straight into what was happening. So you, thank you, Kelly. You went above and beyond. And, uh, I know that the delegation really appreciated, um, having visuals and, uh, having a just overview, uh, presentation. So thank you. I appreciate that. And I thank you for all of, uh, all of you for your input with that. I think that moving forward, um, we just put together a good proposal and hope for, uh, hope for funding. And if not, we gave it our best shot. So nothing ventured, nothing gained. Um, that brings us to future work session topics?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, Michelle Minor and I have been working so on this. Uh, so I'm out of line. Michelle will keep me in check. But as she has listed on the agenda, the National League of Cities is scheduled to, uh, come before council on the 19th of October. the National League of Cities is scheduled to come before council on the 19th of October. Also, that evening, we are looking for, to conduct a discussion in relation to the scope of the design review board. We also will bring back special events permits for discussion. Probably the Public Works Road Paving List, I believe we have scheduled for next Tuesday. Also, ARPA Consulting Services. So I think Kevin touched on that in the previous work session. He has more specifics to provide you next week, as well as me. We're hoping to have found a vehicle for you to consider purchase for the manager of inspections, the newly hired personnel, that we need to be outfitted with a vehicle. So those are the topics we are anticipating for the 19th of October. And then on the 26th, which is our, I know it's future work session topics, but just to try to give you an overall overview of sort of the legislation and things that you'll consider at your meeting on the 26th. Looks like we will have the public hearing for the amended and reinstated Development Rights and Responsibilities Agreement for Heritage Green, the zoning map amendment for 14 Hawthorne Drive, which is the Armory, the Halloween Proclamation, we will consider at that time, as well as the municipal government works proclamation. So just to give you an overview.
So full meetings coming up, so make sure that you caffeinate, and so we can power through those. But fantastic. Thank you so much. Anything else that staff, council would like to add for the future work session topics? Hearing none, please to the public forum. If anyone would like to speak, I ask that you state your name, your address, whether you live within the incorporated town limits, and please keep it to three minutes or less.
I'd like to talk, Mayor.
Okay, please, for the record, state your name, your address in the incorporated town limits. It's the floor.
Mike Runzola, 113 Morris Drive, within the incorporated town limits. I first want to thank Mr. Stahl and Mr. Gardner for completing the project on Morris Drive and returning that property back to its original form. They did a wonderful job, and the neighbors appreciate it. Many thanks to them. On, in November of 2020, I made a recommendation because we had, at that time, four annexations, or annexation requests that the town was going to consider. And I recommended that there be a citizen survey to determine, first of all, to identify the properties, let them know what the petitioners wanted to do with the properties, and then respond as to whether they were in favor or not. Mayor, you said that you were in favor of that, and you could put it on the town website, no cost, without any problem. The very next month, when I questioned, when was that survey going to be up and running, you did a 180, changed your mind, gave hardly any explanation as to why you did. As a result, three of those annexation requests were approved without the benefit of the citizen input that could have been easily had. One of those requests, the hub, is still out there. And last month, I recommended that the town no longer entertain any requests from this group until they reaffirm the commitments, plural, that they've already made to our town regarding this situation. And I need to know from the town whether or not they're going to do that. And if they're, whether they are or not, it should be discussed in public session with a vote from our entire town council. These people made commitments, and they should follow through with them, especially the one where they were going to pay for a survey with results published prior to any vote from our town council. I've heard nothing. We need an answer, and we need a discussion from the entire town council about this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll take that under consideration. As we had said in the past, and I will speak for myself, for, because I'm the only holdover from the previous council, we, I am, and you am, and I may have done a 180. I'm sure I probably did, because as I am further educated, I realize there is no legal requirement to have a survey of that such. We are going to rely on the public hearing process. We do. We have a very engaged council now that, not saying the previous one wasn't, but a lot of information is disseminated through social media. Our staff does a fantastic job of emailing. They put the public notice out on websites. So we do what we are required to do by state, and seeing that it's a non-binding survey, that is an additional expense and goes against the public hearing process, which has been put in place not only for the municipality, but throughout the state. That is what I am recommending to our council to adhere to, because that is fair across the board. And that, anyone who is interested in weighing in on annexations, they have the absolute right to come to our business meetings, to come to our public hearings, and voice their opinions. Councilman Challenger?
Okay, so this is, this is on a separate topic. I apologize. This probably was more appropriate during the future work sessions topics, but I didn't want to forget, the Charles County Chamber of Commerce, which I know some of you have been very involved in the past, or still involved, is putting on a dinner on November 10th for first responders of Charles County. It's going to be at the Charles County Fairgrounds. I wanted you all to, to have a radar. I know the county is going to be looked at as far as putting a proclamation together for first responders. I think that may be something that the town might want to look at. And I can get you all further information tonight, an email as far as what the chamber has put together. It's going to be an open event. And Chief Schinner, I know Ms. Grady over with the Chamber of Commerce said that the information to the town police department as well should be on its way. I know the Charles County Volunteer EMS and Fire and Charles County Sheriff's Office are all pretty heavily involved. So it's going to be first annual event for the county. And I think us as a town being involved would be a great option for us. And I just want to put that on your radar. So thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilman Challenger. And it is very important that we do show support, and through a proclamation would be very appropriate. So we will make sure that we discuss that and have something that is suitable for that event. All right, do I have any other comments? All right. Fantastic job again. So thank you so much, council and staff. I appreciate it. If I, if someone would like to make a motion to adjourn, I would entertain that.
May I adjourn?
You want to get back on that cruise, don't you? Thank you, Councilman Goldsmith. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Can you deny? All right. Enjoy your vacation. Safe travels, and you guys have a beautiful week. Thank you so much.
Thank you, staff. Thank you, council members. Good night.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Kelly.